I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Seated for tonight's meeting will be, let's see, Ben, myself, Gardner Young, Fred, Lynn Conway, one, two, three, four, and who's up next now?
Ryan.
Ryan is seated for this meeting. Okay, now, can we have a motion on the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
A second?
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying, carry.
Staying.
Okay, so we have four, one, two, three ayes, right? Three ayes, all right, one abstention, and no noes. Okay, staff reports.
Under correspondence, we have a town of Groton correspondence about proposed regulation amendment to modify the minimum lot area per dwelling unit in the Mystic Downtown District, the MDD. This was referred by the town of Groton. This is a regulation amendment proposed by a property owner to modify the minimum lot area per dwelling unit in that zone from 2,000 square feet to 1,000 square feet. So it basically doubled the residential density allowed in that zone. They're having a public hearing on this on Tuesday, January 28th. So this is just sent to you in case you do have any comments that you'd like to make to send to the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. You're not under any obligation to comment, and you do have another meeting between now and then.
Okay, does anybody have anything they would like to send over to the county of Groton versus this letter we received? Okay. Yes, not, so we can move on to the next bit of business. All right, old business, and this is PZ 1929 SUP, CAM, DW Casper, EHR Group, Coastal Wealth Management. This hearing was continued because they were going to be adding more information, so it's been continued. We left it in the rebuttal period if any -- oh, is this better?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I don't usually have that problem. Okay, anyhow, this hearing was continued because they were going to add new information. So we're going to be opening it up in rebuttal stages. If anybody would like to make any comment or rebuttal, is there a sign up sheet over there?
There is.
All right, there's a sign up sheet over there, or just raise your hand and we'll be acknowledged.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to get off, and Chuck will be on, because he was seated during the hearing.
Okay, fine, all right.
That's right, we do have to make some --
So for this portion of the meeting, Ben will be recused, and Chuck will be seated.
And?
Oh, so you should be recused as well. All right, so we have two recusals and one addition for this portion of the meeting.
That's right, so we'll have Gardner Young, Fred Dykman, Lynn Conway, and Chuck Sheen. So just four instead of the usual five for this.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
We got, thank you, we got that sorted out, I hope. All right, so, does anybody have any comment that they would like to make about this particular hearing before we move on?
Jim Stanton spoke last time.
Yeah, he spoke last, okay. Carlene, did you have anything you want? Okay.
My name is Carlene Donarumo. I reside in Parketuck, part of the town of Stonington. I wasn't able to attend the December 17th meeting, but I did read the minutes, and I'm somewhat dismayed at the applicant's refusal or not offering to put sidewalks in as requested by the town. It seems that the only way that sidewalks happen in our town is that the applicant provides them. Let me give you one, a contrasting example. In Parketuck, not too long ago, an applicant came in and voluntarily offered to put in 500 feet of sidewalk. This particular applicant would only have to put in 200 feet. The excuse or the example that they gave that was going to be such a big problem was the telephone poles. Well, you can put the cement through the telephone poles, around the telephone poles. In Parketuck, we have a zigzag sidewalk because of property lines. So I think that's something that could be overcome. The other thing that I think is important, that their excuse that, "Well, my clients aren't going to be using sidewalks," is a very lame excuse. When you come before this town and want to do business in the town, you have to think globally, not just for yourself, because that's a very busy road, Route 1. There's a hotel up the street where we'll have people who are visiting, they're going to want to walk down the street, go to Avanti's, or whatever, other shops that are over there. So I think this applicant should do his part in helping the town out, and be required to put sidewalks on their property and with their project. So I encourage you to put that as a stipulation of their approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Sardar.
My name is Paul Sardar, 12 Jackson Avenue, Mystic. I live in Mystic and very familiar with the location. I was actually pretty excited about seeing this application. It looks overall, I had read the original ridge report that Keith had put together, briefly skimmed the minutes of your last meeting. I saw that there was a lot of stipulation by the town engineer, certainly, you know, the town staff is on it, so there's a lot of details. I like, like Carlene, are concerned about sidewalks, and I was just walking down that street just the other week, just last weekend. I know there's sidewalks on the other side of the street, but as development keeps growing and as this applicant does a really nice thing by taking two kind of blah properties, one pretty decrepit property, and putting in a really nice, a nice building, which I think would be attractive, it's a great use, it's a great place for it, so I'm really in favor of the development itself, and I think he'd get a lot of support from the town. I know there's not a lot of people here, I don't know how many people were here last meeting, but I know people in my neighborhood are happy to see this, and we'd really like to see him do it, but I really hope you can come to some type of agreement with something like that, to give back to the community and show support for the community with those sidewalks. I'm sure you can work out the details. Town engineer is not going to let things happen that can't, you know, from a technical standpoint, won't happen, but generally speaking, my comments are general, but I'm generally speaking, I like it, and I hope you guys can come to an agreement for that. But sidewalks are pretty important. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment on this before we move on?
I do have comments I was asked to read in the record from Ben Tamski in Mystic. He writes, "Good evening, commissioners. I'm here to follow up on the comments of the previous speaker, Mr. Stanton. I believe that building in downtown Mystic is a privilege and should be treated as such by this board. The former director of planning advocated time and time again for a walkable village and one that encouraged people to give up their automobiles while patronizing local businesses. The planner in the staff report for this application echoes that call by recommending the installation of sidewalks in front of this project. He also points out importantly that sidewalks in this location are a goal of the 2015 POCD. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Police Commissioners are also currently advocating for the construction of new sidewalks in the downtown area. We have all been hearing for some time about the need for sidewalks along Route 1 in Parketuck, and it is no secret that will be a huge undertaking. The applicant has complained that there are obstacles to the construction of sidewalks at the site. There's one utility pole at either end of the side frontage and one pole approximately in the middle. This certainly does not seem to constitute that owner's a burden to overcome. I'm not sure what responsibility the utility has when it comes to pedestrian accommodation, but I would hope that they would do their part. Here we have the opportunity to get the property owner to install this needed amenity. This is as it should be. As they add intensity to the site, they should pick up the tab for improvements that this added intensity demands. When you look around town and see how intense is the demand for pedestrian improvements, it becomes clear that we should demand them when we can. Building in Mystic is a privilege, and it's time to start demanding that those who build here are as committed to the same quality development that you, I am sure, desire. Respectfully, Ben Tamski, Mystic."
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before we move on?
Can I speak on behalf of the applicant?
Well, that's where we're up to. If nobody, if nobody else wants to make a comment, you're on. So I gather nobody else wants to make any comments, so take it away.
My name is Kyle Hobart. I'm from CLA Engineers, here on behalf of the applicant. Ellen Bartlett from our office presented the scope of the project to you guys in December. I'm here filling in for her today. Since that last meeting, we did address the town engineer's comments, and he's provided a letter back to staff noting that the, his comments have been addressed. On the sidewalk issue, I'd like to note that to the east and west of the property, there are no sidewalks now existing, they are across the street, and at the intersection, there is a crosswalk to that sidewalk across the street, and we'll be providing a level concrete pad in accordance with DOT requirements at that crosswalk to allow safe access back and forth across the street. The applicant, Jason Cerniglia, would like to address you and also address some of the sidewalk concerns as well, so I'll bring him up now to address that.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Cerniglia. I'm the applicant. I'm a resident of Mystic. I grew up here. I have property here as a business owner, and my home. I think it's important that that be noted, because what I'm about to sort of present is from someone who grew up here and wants to do the best that I can for Mystic and for my community, but I also feel like a number of the comments are based on emotion, not fact, so I'd like to just talk about some of the facts. There's a document that I handed out, and I apologize if I don't have enough. This isn't just about the sidewalks in front of my property. There is a sidewalk from downtown Mystic to the Mystic Packer Building on the side of the road that my property's on. At that point, it becomes what I believe to be nearly an impossibility to have a continuous sidewalk from the Mystic Packer Building to Mason's Island Road. There are not a couple, there are a dozen electrical poles. There is a gigantic light pole, which is on page one, which has a huge electric box. As you continue down that road, there's a crosswalk, you have five different opportunities to cross the road between the Packer Building and Mason's Island Road. There are additional multiple in-ground electrical wiring boxes. There is a cemetery. There's literally a headstone within seven feet of the road. There would be a sidewalk that would need to be added on the bridge side, and then when you get up to Sea Swirl, you would be encroaching upon their property. When you pass my property, my property not included, but there are three light poles, signage, an opportunity across the street, we've mentioned that we'd make accommodations for a cutout, and then you move up towards the Tabor Inn, there are multiple additional light poles and a gigantic ledge that would, from everything we can see, would need to be blasted. So this isn't just about my inability, our ability to put sidewalks in, it's about the fact that it's a significant, it's not a small expense, it's a significant expense. If you look at the building that I own in downtown, where my current building is, it's by every, every comment, extremely well done, and I can promise you that this property will be beautiful, you know, very well done, but this is a situation where the sidewalk, in my belief, it's never going to be complete unless we, you know, do things that probably aren't ever going to happen. Above and beyond that, you know, everyone continues to make comments that this is downtown Mystic. Now, I don't know what the official definition of downtown Mystic is, but I would guess that most people would agree that, you know, that part is not downtown, you're outside of the historic district. There are very few pedestrians that walk that far out. We don't have an official count, I've done research, but it's a very, in the single digits on a daily basis in terms of the pedestrian count. There were comments about danger. There has never been a fatal impact accident of a biker or pedestrian on that corner, and I looked that up, and there's studies that were done that I've done, the SCCOG's Regional Bike and Pedestrian Plan. So I do understand, I want this to be a beautiful property, but you have very little traffic. Another comment that was made by Ben Tamski said, I forget the terminology he used, I apologize, but he said, effectively saying, "Increase traffic." The property as it existed was three dwelling units and a financial planning office. The properties as it will be improved and beautified is three dwelling units and a financial planning office. So I don't feel like it's a fair assumption to ask us to do something that will never be complete on that side, in my opinion, when we're not changing the property in any way. We've worked really, really hard to make this a great property. We're not outside of any of the variables, we're working with every different department within the town, and it will be a great property. I just don't feel like it's a fair thing to ask to put sidewalks in that are, that are just never going to be complete on that side. I just can't imagine that we're going to move a dozen light poles, we're going to move a cemetery, I just don't see it happening. So, you know, we've complied with everything that you've asked and done more, but I think this is hopefully a request for, you know, a waiver, or whatever you want to call it, so that we can get going with it and do it right. So, those are my comments, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
One of the, one of the comments in the first meeting was the cost, it was about the cost of a sidewalk. Do you have an idea of what it would cost to do that?
The guestimate is forty, perhaps, thousand dollars.
How much?
Forty thousand dollars, perhaps, more.
As a percentage of the development cost of the property, that's very minor.
Yeah, it's a small, it's a small number, but --
Okay, yeah, thank you.
To do something that is effectively, again, in my opinion, never going to be complete, you know, it's a hundred foot here and then 500 feet of nothing, so I, again, and there's no traffic out there, there's no pedestrian traffic. Comments that were made about, you know, well, I'll leave it at that, I don't, I don't want to have this be, yeah, argumentative, I just, I just feel like it would be a cost that would not bear any value to the town, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment on this before we move on? All right, could I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So move on this?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
A few things about sidewalks, is the sidewalks were requested, but I just want to be clear that the sidewalks are not a requirement. You know, it's not something that's in our zoning regulations, it's something that's recommended in our POCD, but it's not something that's a literal requirement. An alternative could be some sort of walking path from the business to the crosswalk. An alternative in theory is to have the sidewalk on their private property with an easement, but to stipulate that, you are getting into takings territory, where you're basically taking part of their land, and in doing that, you have to have a real proportionality there. You know, that what you're taking from them has to really, there has to be a direct link to the impacts of what they're doing and what the town's exacting from them.
That's a little hard, since there's no regulation requiring it.
There's no regulation, and it is a case where the site isn't literally being intensified. Like some of the other examples we've had, like Birchwood Farms in Parketuck or Spruce Meadows, you had sites which had little to nothing on them, which all of a sudden had, you know, 50 or so dwelling units, where you're just, you're not having that sort of increase in traffic or density on this site.
And basically, from what I'm understanding correctly, the density is staying the same old versus new, I mean, it's a new --
Right, right.
It's a new building, but the actual density of occupancy is pretty much the same of what is there now.
Right, it's a, it's a larger building, but it's also the same use of a financial service office.
Quick question. It's really a key. I'd like to make sort of a public hearing, basically, applicant or the engineer, most of the people can usually hear me, but for the record. An easement for a future sidewalk, would that, I mean, is that really a taking? Because, you know, you're not, you're not taking the land, it's for the sidewalk, they still have the area, for purposes. You're not forcing them to do it now, but if it becomes practical in the future to construct sidewalks at some point in time, it's easier to put sidewalks in here than that. So, an easement for future sidewalks, and it would only be like a couple of feet. The owner would still retain owner's underlying land and fee simple, and all the zoning calculations would stay the same. So, so, what are your feelings on that? Is that as onerous an ask, as asking him to build sidewalks in the future? And I don't think you'd need the full width, I think you'd need only a couple of feet from my look at this, with the edge of road.
You know, it wouldn't literally be as onerous, it's still, it still is, you know, them giving up a property right, you know, where they couldn't expand their building in that area, because it'll be reserved for a future sidewalk?
It's in the setback there.
Is it?
It's, it's in the setback, they can't use it for any purpose. It doesn't affect their underlying ownership and fee simple, and it doesn't affect the zoning calculations, and they don't have to build anything now, but the concerns that some of these votes raised about perhaps sidewalks in the future, maybe people aren't walking there now because it's so darn dangerous that you can't walk there, and with sidewalks you could. But I agree with what the owner showed in terms of the picture, that there are difficult obstacles for sidewalks, and perhaps it makes no sense to put the sidewalks in now, but a two-foot easement that doesn't affect your use of the land, it's within the area that's the setback's on, you can never use it for anything, and the sidewalk should be built in the future when they can be accommodated or never built perhaps, but it at least is some decent planning for the future if the owner would agree with it. So I certainly wouldn't want to propose it if the owner didn't agree, but perhaps if he agrees, it doesn't have to build the sidewalks now, but it accommodates the sidewalks in the future, then all interests are served.
You know, it could be something that they would, they would agree to.
So if I'm understanding, so if I'm --
So I guess that's, excuse me, just one second, I guess that's a question from the engineer and the owner as to whether a two-foot easement would help accommodate the sidewalk. Is the public hearing still open?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't close it.
Kyle Hobart from CLA Engineer. I just spoke with the applicant, and that is something that he would be agreeable to, you know, granting a two-foot easement on his property for the potential future sidewalk.
All right, so the easement, so the easement --
Would that would come the cost?
No, not a two-foot sidewalk, a four-foot sidewalk, but it would be built partially within the rideaway, and you'd have that additional two feet to set the sidewalk back. So are we talking about ADA compliant? Yeah, no, still a four-foot sidewalk.
The sidewalk itself would, yeah, if it was ever constructed, I would assume would have to be ADA compliant, but that, giving that extra couple of feet onto the, onto the applicant's property would give some leeway to that.
So I just want to, I want to ask a question of this nature. So if, for discussion purposes only, that future development of a sidewalk would be at the owner's expense, not the town's expense, that would be --
I don't --
Acceptable?
Believe so, no. If, if this development went and they granted the easement to the town for the future construction, at that point, it would be the town's expense, I believe, to construct the sidewalk.
I think that would be, if, if we do what Chuck suggests, it would be my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, but Keith, you can chime in, that going forward, if a sidewalk were to be built, it would be on the town's dime.
Yeah, and that's the general idea of the sidewalk easement, is that they'd give the town permission to have a sidewalk partially on their land in the future.
So, you know, we can, we can, I have no further questions for the applicant, I think it's something we can discuss if we want to after the --
I have, no, I have one additional question, and it's unrelated to this, if I could. I see the town engineer's recommendations, and I agree with all of the recommendations, that he's recommending an as-built plan because of the close proximity of the drainage facilities principally to adjacent property lines. And this, this development is sort of shoehorned into the site in very, in very close proximity with significant earthwork and sedimentation and erosion control measures taking place along the westernly and southerly boundaries. My experience with this kind of stuff is it, it doesn't go bad at the as-built plan phase, it goes bad at the beginning because the owner sought not to stake it out in advance. So I would add to the town engineer's condition that the site be staked out in advance, and you probably have every intention of doing this, but, because in a site like this, I think you'd have to, that the boundaries would be laid out in advance and that the facilities would all be staked out in advance of construction, and it really will permit an orderly prosecution of the work, where you're not going to be approaching onto other people's property, because you're working along the property line in, like, 300 feet of the property line, it's affected right on the property line. And, and it would be my recommendation that it be staked out in advance and that we also get an as-built plan. And I think it would provide for the orderly development and protect the owners on the, on the west and south side from, from any approach. So it would be an additional condition, that it be staked out in advance, and I would add that to the town engineer's recommendation.
All right, Keith, if you're ready.
I do have one clarifying question for the applicant, because I'm going to be very close to the country. I don't see any standalone signage. I see the signage on the buildings itself. Is that correct, that the only signage is designed that's on the buildings itself?
Well, eventually, you know, the --
On the site plan, we do call out a post-sign location right by the entrance here.
Within the guidelines of the site, and we don't, we don't have a very big sign, it's within, and I think it's two feet by four feet, I forget the number, and I apologize, but we don't need, nor do we want this egregious sign. If you drive by our current office, it's the Yellow Gamble Colonial Crossing, the mobile station downtown, our sign is maybe two feet by three feet, so it would be a similar sign. Depending on structure, we could be hanging as it is, or, you know, two-side posts, but it would be a small sign just inside the entrance, of the entrance on Route 1.
Okay, would that obstruct any future sidewalk?
No, that is set outside of, beyond the ten-foot building setback line, so no, that would not obstruct anything in the future.
New information. New information.
Okay.
When applicants haven't shown what their signage is, they come back to show it to you. If it's not on that plan, I don't know how you can approve it. Is it on the plan?
It is on, yeah.
I don't know, I didn't look at it.
It's on the plan, and it's called out to meet the zoning requirements.
Okay, because it -- Where it's not is on -- I haven't looked at the plans. On the pictorial, here, there's nothing. And the signs are just small, but -- Yeah, because there, there's rules about how big the sign can be anyway.
Yeah, because there's rules about how big the sign can be anyway.
I just want to be sure that, based on the discussion on the sidewalk.
May I also comment briefly?
Paul Sarterian, 12 Jackson Avenue. I just wanted to comment on the applicant. I think he's got a pretty valid point. I mean, I've lived in downtown for 35 years. As a resident, I like to see the sidewalks, but if it's, we already have sidewalks along the whole other side of the street. As long as it's, it's clearly accommodated for crosswalks, for access to crosswalks, and that's clear and, and done, I can, I've seen development where there's a patch of sidewalk and then there's nothing else. And we have one on Washington Street, and it's been there for, I don't know, close to 15 or 20 years, and none other. And certainly, and this, Mr.
Fine gentleman.
Mr. Fine gentleman, that was a brilliant suggestion, and especially since the applicant wants to do it. I, I think it's, as a resident who's been there a long time and you've seen my face before, I think it's a great idea.
All right, anybody have any other questions?
Well, I guess before the hearing closes, one of the things that we talked about is the possibility of a walkway from building entrance to the existing crosswalk, and if that's still something the commission would want to see, since the sidewalk isn't going in.
Can we talk about that once the hearing is closed in our discussion?
Well, if it's something that we want to discuss with them.
There is a pad called out, the crosswalk, Cross Route 1 is right here. We are putting in a flat concrete pad to allow access and safe refuge on the Interpo there. This particular business doesn't have, you know, pedestrian traffic, you know, coming into it, so we don't think really a sidewalk to the main entrance would be a significant benefit to the, to the development.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have anybody thing else? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, second to close the public hearing.
Chairman, could I ask that the stipulation be placed in there about the stakeout and easement, because it's not in the recommended.
We can, we can do that in our discussion. Before we, before we put anything up to vote, we'll do it in our discussion.
Thank you.
All right, any other, any other comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries. Public hearing is closed. Now, what do we want? Do we have a motion that we would like to make in regards to this, or, and then, you know, I think it'd be good to get a motion on the floor, and then we can do amendments as we see, feel necessary before we vote on anything.
For purposes of discussion, I will make a motion to approve the project as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the plan as submitted. Let's open it up for discussion. Do we want to make any changes to what?
So I would recommend stipulations one through five as, one through six, rather, as included in the town planners memo to ourselves, and would add to it that all work be field-staked by qualified personnel in advance of construction, and that with the owner's consent, an easement would be dedicated to the town, a two-foot easement, for the purposes of, of building a future sidewalk. And I don't.
That would be number seven, thank you.
Do we have to add the waivers also?
That would be part of the vote. That would, that should be added.
Waivers, load that separately.
It can either be combined in one if it's specifically mentioned, or it can be a.
And I would also add the recommended waivers.
So, just to clarify, that number five, you're still proposing to be in there, which was the concrete walkway from the building entrance to the existing crosswalk?
Correct. One through six, that would include number five, which is final plan should include concrete walkway from building entrance to the existing sidewalk. I guess we agreed on them, but I think everybody's looking at your option.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to point out a couple of things. One is that the plan of conservation and development, one of the objectives of that is to improve pedestrian access to village areas, and as someone pointed out, we don't really have a boundary for mystic as a village, but, but I don't see that this would fall outside of any, any place anybody would reasonably draw a boundary. And I'm not sure why it makes sense to let an opportunity go by to, to put a sidewalk in on that side of Route 1. We have pavement all the way from Sea Swirl, if the sidewalk were, sidewalk were put in, we'd have pavement where you could get pedestrians out of the roadway, all the way from Sea Swirl up to the Tabor Inn. And we'd be missing two pieces, one Tabor Inn to the corner of Mason's Island Road and the other down to the Packer Building on the other side. I think it's a missed opportunity to, to take care of this, and I think policy ought to be that development in a stretch like this includes sidewalks anytime anybody does significant improvements to their property.
Well, unfortunately, the regulations don't recommend that, so our hands are sort of bound unless I'm mistaken. Keith, am I, I mean, since the regulations don't include it, we can't really.
The main thing is the zoning regulations. I mean, the P O C D is a guide to this and is a guide to our own regulations that we create also.
So, you know, I have to agree with Fred on this, and I, we are trying to promote a village-like environment, where we are promoting pedestrian, foot traffic, cycling, et cetera. This is a very busy part of Route 1. It's got great traffic across the street with Mystic Market coming in and out, which is a heavily congested area for traffic coming in and out, right close to the Mason's Island Light. It's almost impossible to pull in or pull out of there. Often, I know personally, when I go in, I'm kind of half in, half out for a while while people try to manipulate the parking lot, right? So this is right near there, and the ability for a pedestrian to cross the street, avoid that, right, is an enhancement. We've got an increase in bikers. It'd be nice to have, have them, you know, be able to, you know, pedestrians to get out of the way of the bikers. The community center is expanding, right? The people who go to the community center, the numbers are expanding. We want them to be able to walk to get there, et cetera. So, you know, I do, I do understand. It's almost like a little oasis, right, in this, in this side, and it looks like it can't be done. But we got to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere. And yes, it's not a regulation, but it is part of our goals in the P O C D. And I don't think it would be, be beyond the board to require that as part of the approval. I think it's within our privy to do that.
Okay, yep.
Well, actually.
All right, is there any other comment?
I'm embarrassed to say this, but yesterday, I had to get from Mystic Market to Allen Street, and I did it by car, okay? Because there's no place to go when you get across Route 1. And I, I see that problem a couple, three times a week, where it's just, and even, even Keith's picture in his report shows a pedestrian trudging down Route 1, heading west. You know, the question is, is, you know, why would we put this off now?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one thing. I think that if, if everyone on that side of the street dedicated a two-foot easement to the town for the purposes of putting in sidewalks, you'd do more for getting sidewalks put in than, than this one short lay. I don't disagree with Lynn or Fred. I think sidewalks are important, but I think they're meaningless if they're on one segment of property and they're not comprehensive. So, so this board should make it a policy of trying to get everyone to do what this applicant volunteered to do and give you the land. That's the most difficult part of the sidewalk, is getting the land. So I don't disagree with either of you, but I think the most important part of it is getting the right-of-way. That's the most difficult part for the town to acquire. They don't have the land to do it, within the right-of-way. So if it's a policy of the board to, to get additional land voluntarily from these applicants by easement, then you're fulfilling the comprehensive plan objective of trying to provide decent pedestrian access in the future, and it's much more comprehensive.
Okay, thank you. There was a question about if it would be possible to split the costs with the town once the sidewalks go in. Is that something that we could require or no? Probably not.
It doesn't seem like we could.
Okay, no, I, I.
And as a, you know, if we're doing this in this whole area, you know, it might be a whole general policy we'd have to come up with about who pays for this.
That makes sense, okay. I just got a little sidebar here. Is there any further discussion before we vote on this motion? And I guess the motion will have, I keep losing my space here. We'll have the six, the five, the five department planning comments, and then the sixth one, Chuck's.
So Mr. Sheehan made his recommendation for these stipulations. I don't know if there was ever a second to amend the original motion, because the original motion was just as presented.
That's true.
Okay, so, all right, so can we have a motion to adopt this plan as amended with the waivers included, and the amendment including Mr. Sheehan's addition about the sidewalk, easing land for the sidewalk?
The easement.
The easement, yes. Okay. Well, I don't, we're gonna have to do some, what would you like, would you make in some sort of a motion? Because the only thing I will tell you is theoretically, we cannot require sidewalks. That's why, that's why I think Chuck's.
Okay.
Wait, I don't think that's true. Keith, is that true? Is that true? We can, as a board, make a motion to add all the stipulations that were already discussed, as well as that there is a sidewalk put in at the owner's expense, and we have, we, we can do that as a board. Is that correct?
In my opinion, it's sort of a legally risky thing to do. I mean, if you're doing on their property, you run the risk of it being a taking. If you're talking about it just being the right-of-way with the expense of moving the utility poles.
You need an easement to move the poles.
Yeah, because the poles have to go somewhere, and they would have to go on their property.
You have to get in the middle of the sidewalk. So then you need an easement, so there is a taking then.
Yeah, and you're, you know, you're dealing with an issue of our regulations not really requiring this, and this falling on the.
I think Chuck's amendment is sort of a neat halfway point resolution to this whole sidewalk issue. You know, it puts it on the table that it can be done, and they will, they're willing to donate the land to the town for the thing, but there's nothing in our regulations that can require a sidewalk be built. So I think, I agree with Keith. I think we're stepping up.
And kudos to the owner, Mr. Chairman. He agreed to it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I fully encourage what you say, and I think, as Keith says, if we start requiring it, we're getting on a slippery slope that we don't need to get on. I mean, you're looking at a lawsuit.
So does that suggest that we need to change the zoning?
Well, that's, that may be at some point in time. That ain't happening tonight.
Well, I mean, we have this problem all over town. We have it in Spades, in Pawtucket, and we've had it for years.
Well, that's, that's, again, an issue for another time.
Well, okay, but.
I mean, you know, right now, we have, we have to live with the regulations as written for the appointment of the, here, the case that's before us. You know, if we want to change regulations going forward, we can do that. We can't do it now. So we have to live with what we own, and what we own does not require a sidewalk. So that's why I think Chuck's solution is sort of a neat wraparound to this thing.
So, so we make the motion, we amend the motion to say, to include all now, is it six or seven stipulations?
It would be eight altogether.
Eight stipulations.
As-built, the construction staking in advance would be number seven, and number eight would be that, you know, that the owner voluntarily grant the town a two-foot easement for future sidewalks.
Okay, so without going through all of that.
That'd be six and seven, right?
There's six.
There's six.
So it'd be seven and eight.
Okay, seven and eight, okay. So, so let me amend the motion to, to approve the project with the eight stipulations we've discussed.
Fine, is there a second for that?
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Now, does this also include the waivers too?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, so the motion's been made and seconded to adopt the plan as amended, including approving the waivers. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
I think we should have a text change to the zoning.
All right.
Yeah.
We are now moving on to P Z 1928, Z C. Yeah, and so seated for this particular portion of the meeting will be, let's see, Ben Philbrick, myself, Gardner Young, Fred Dykman, Lynn Conway, and now who's going to be the, okay, and Ryan Dees, who will be the fifth member for this thing. Could we have the call, please?
Good evening. P Z, the application before us tonight is P Z 1928, Z C and Spa, J and H Hospitality C N E Association. Zone change map amendment and site plan applications for zone change to Neighborhood Development District, also known as N D D, and construction of two new hotels, adding a total of 217 new hotel rooms in two buildings totaling 142,170 square feet. Property located at 6 Coogan Boulevard and Village Farm Road, Clara Drive, Mystic. Assessors map 164, block four, lots four, and map 171, block two, lot one, zone TC 80.
Thank you. All right, the way the public hearing works, we'll hear first from the applicant, and then from the staff, and then we will hear comments in favor, comments against, and general comments. If you wish to speak in any one of those slots, there is a signup sheet over there. Please sign up so we can call you. All right, now we will hear from the applicant. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. Pete Parent with CME Associates, representing the applicant. For anyone that's not familiar. For anyone that's not familiar, the site is located on Coogan Boulevard. Route 27 is to the west. Mystic Aquarium is to the east. The shops are directly across the street. McDonald's, Holiday Inn, McQuade's Market, and this is the parcel that kind of sits in back of the Holiday Inn. The applicant's intent here is to combine the existing Holiday Inn parcel with the parcel to the rear, and then add the whole thing to the NDD, and then do individual condo documents so that the ownerships of the individual buildings are retained.
Can I flip the lines sideways so that some of these folks in the audience can see? Maybe, well, maybe just a little bit.
So the general development scheme going forward is to construct this hotel first. It'll be a Hilton Homewood Suites, and then this site will remain as a pad site for a future hotel as currently conceived. This is a true model by Marriott, but that may change in the future. And as Keith noted, the applicant's aware that that would need to come before you folks again for an additional approval. So the site will primarily be accessed off of Clara Drive. Clara Drive comes to Coogan Boulevard as a signalized intersection, and will have circulation through the site around at the hotel level. And then we have this combined parking lot, which will be shared by the three individual hotels as overflow parking lot as, you know, needs necessitate. Also on the site is the Rio Salado Restaurant that's, you know, currently in the final stages of being completed, which is mostly accessed off of Village Farm Road. In discussions with the police commission, Village Farm Road is currently signaled, signed as a right turn only, and as part of this, concerns about traffic making that left-hand turn with reduced sightlines. We're adding a small raised concrete island that would deter pedestrian, like passenger vehicle-sized cars, but any kind of delivery vehicle or emergency vehicle could easily ride up on top of it and still make the corner. As part of a kind of a pedestrian connectivity thing going, we are adding sidewalk along Village Farm Road, and then sidewalk along our parking lot to connect to the sidewalk in Clara Drive, so that'll connect this whole area with the sidewalk system along Coogan Boulevard and further down. Proposing to bring in our underground utilities off of Village Farm Road to serve power, electric, telecommunications. Water will come off of Clara Drive. Sewer will go out to Coogan Boulevard, and then our stormwater detention system sits in that overflow parking area to make sure that we're attenuating and treating all our peak stormwater flows. So that's project in a nutshell. I'd be happy to address any questions, concerns you may have.
Have you looked at Clara Drive at all?
We looked at the intersection of Clara Drive with Coogan Boulevard and the signal timing and that sort of thing, yes.
How about the right angle turn, the last right angle turn where you're coming south on Clara and going west towards this project? Did you look at that turn there at all?
That S curve meets typical standard road geometry. It wasn't specifically addressed in the...
It doesn't meet the subdivision regulations for anything other than a stop intersection. So as a stop intersection, it works, but as a road, it doesn't even meet a 10 mile an hour design by current geometric standards. So I'm wondering if anything can be done with that intersection. It's kind of a steep grade going easterly on Clara Drive to make it a stop intersection. But my observation of that is that delivery trucks that are coming into the market can't stay, you know, when they're coming in and they're going 15 miles an hour around that curve, coming south on Clara Drive, going west on Clara Drive, they're in the opposite lane every time. And in fact, I'm in the opposite lane in a one-ton truck coming around that corner. And I did it again tonight just before I came here, and I observed the delivery truck coming in while a vehicle was going east on Clara Drive. And I think something needs to be done at that location, either make it a stop intersection, which appears to have been laid out to be from the beginning, or soften that curve, or widen the south side and east side of Clara Drive so that the turning path of maybe a single unit truck or a fire truck could get around there, staying in its own lane. Otherwise, I think it's a serious traffic problem. Yeah. They have an easement across the town. You have rights to that, don't you, not?
To this location?
Yeah.
No.
You don't.
No.
But how, well, how are you using it to get into your...
Clara Drive's a public way at that point, yeah.
Okay, so again, the geometrics of it don't accommodate increased traffic.
Okay.
So I think it's an issue like your driveway. You know, it's bad now. It's gonna get worse with more vehicle trips, you know, than opposing traffic coming around that corner.
It's certainly something we can look at.
Okay, as I understand this application, you're asking for a change in zone?
Correct.
From TC-80 to Neighborhood Development Zone, right?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
TC-80 with a special use permit allows hotels.
Correct.
So it's sort of a two-part question. Why do you need a zone change? And how does this fit with the definition in the regulations of a Neighborhood Development District?
Okay, so the answer to the question of why we need the zone change is, in order to get the setback and density of the hotel that's laid out here, it just wouldn't work with the size property that we have. And one of the suggestions that we talked with the town about was, do we come forward with an application to try and change the hotel's special use permit to accommodate the densities that we were looking for? And they suggested that perhaps the NDD was a fitting tool in that we can provide this pedestrian connectivity between the shops and the aquarium and the market and this hotel, and provide, you know, the neighborhood aspect from that standpoint.
But if you look at Section 7.2 of the regulations, and they talk about neighborhood development as being part of the village, which of course this is not, and it talks about encouraging the development of diversified uses. This just simply doesn't fit a Neighborhood Development District in my estimation in any way, shape, or form. I don't understand it.
Okay.
I mean, we talked several months ago about Smiler's Wharf, and with all the problems it had, that was one of the that it didn't have. That was a neighborhood development. This is, is an attempt to use neighborhood development to override the buffers that would otherwise be required to build a hotel on this property. It doesn't work for me. I don't understand how you justify it.
It's fair enough.
Do you have any second hotel will look like? Is there any kind of, can you give us anything?
I could provide you with the prototype drawings for that hotel. It's more of a modern take in the prototype, which wouldn't fit here, obviously, so, you know, this would also have to go before architectural design review and those folks. And like I said, you know, we're modeling that currently, but that could not be the brand that went forward if they got approved. You know, we would have to come back to fit whatever hotel got selected there into that site. The prototype here is a four-story building as well.
Anybody have any other questions, comments?
Yes. Has... I understand it's moratorium, we all do. Have you ironed out where you're gonna connect, when you connect?
So the thought is to connect to is an existing manhole where the Holiday Inn discharges to the main line in Coogan Boulevard.
Right.
So we'd be connecting to that manhole. We've done some preliminary calculations for the two hotels based on information WPTA provided to us on the Holiday Inn, McDonald's, and the pump station. Assuming that all of the flow from these two hotels occurs over an eight-hour period with a peak factor of four, we're still able to fit within 80% of the maximum capacity of the existing line in Coogan Boulevard. And I ran that by Beta. They felt that it was reasonably conservative, and, you know, in speaking with Doug, he thought that we would need to get Beta to put that in writing for us.
Excuse me, who's Beta?
Oh, Beta's the town's consulting engineer that's been doing your sewer work.
No, Beta is just a consulting engineer that our WPTA uses.
I didn't realize.
Sorry.
And they think it could, it would work.
Preliminary, they thought that our numbers were conservative, but, you know, they would have to put that in writing for us.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Does that also deal with the energy level of the water coming down the hill? Have they examined that?
Right, so the, this line in Coogan Boulevard, we looked at the shallowest pitch line from our capacity analysis. But yeah, it is an eight-inch line here going into a 21-inch main in Route 27. So there's not a velocity concern at that point.
How about a hydraulic gradient concern?
No, we're within the capacity of the line, you know, 80% of the design.
Hydraulic gradient, you know, that'll blow the manhole cover off because of the elevation of the discharge and the velocity that coming down, coming down the hill. That, the energy level of that water is incredible. I mean, what's the vertical drop from the elevation of the hotel down to Coogan Boulevard?
This existing manhole is a drop manhole, and there's another drop manhole at the location, yeah.
It's going into a vertical drop?
Yes.
Have you examined, looking at onsite storage if it doesn't work?
We have not.
In off-peak period?
We have not looked at storage at this point, based on the fact that we felt that the line had capacity, but that's certainly an option if it didn't. But I think everybody's preference would be if that line needed to be upgraded.
That's something that you're proud of.
Well, I mean, it would be, if that line needed to be upgraded, it would certainly be on the developer's nickel at this point.
Did you also read that there were issues with regard to fire suppression and water pressure to provide adequate fire suppression?
So there was a hydrant test done two years ago, so it's not perfectly current, but they did have adequate pressure in here. From our MEP's estimate, they did have adequate volume and pressure to serve the domestic use in this hotel and this hotel. The question being is whether they would need storage and booster pumps for fire protection.
What time of year was that hydrant test done?
I believe it was done in October of 2017.
So you plan to do an updated test?
Yes, but they don't do fire hydrant tests when the weather is freezing, just a safety thing.
Okay, any other questions?
Did I read that there's shallow rock here?
Yes, so... This plan demonstrates where we're anticipating rock removal in this hatched area here.
What sheet is that?
This is sheet 20.
Where would you put a tag, a water storage tag? I hope you wouldn't be planting anything above ground.
No, no, it would all have to be subsurface, yes. Yes, so the, we're anticipating, you know, some ledge removal here under the underground detention system, and if we needed to put in underground cistern, it would probably fit best in this location here.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify a few things here. What the applicants are looking for is a zone change from the TC-80 zone to the Neighborhood Development District, the NDD. And the NDD is what we call a floating zone. So it's a zone that's based upon a master plan, which they've presented here. So if the commission wants to approve the master plan, it would rezone the property to the NDD. Unlike other zoning districts where they can then apply for anything in the zone, they're bound to what's shown in the master plan. A lot of times, an applicant will get approval for a master plan, which is more general or conceptual, and then that's followed with a step two, which is a more detailed site plan application. In this case, they've combined both into one, which our regulations allow if there's enough information. So because they've done all the drainage information, all the engineering work, they're applying for both at once, the master plan and the site plan application. So basically, if the commission approves this, they can build it. They won't have to come back before you for this.
Would for the second hotel.
And that's, well, that's, they would, and that's what we recommend is that if you approve it, that the second hotel would have to come back for another master plan amendment, so you'll have your highest level of discretion, because you haven't seen what it looks like, you haven't seen any real information about how tall it is. Now, when you're dealing with these floating zones and these master plans, the commission is dealing with its highest level of legislative discretion. So, you know, unlike some of the other cases where if something just meets the regulations, you have to approve it, with this, you have a lot of leeway to say yes or no as to change the zone. Should I get into all the comments received and things like that, or would you like to hear from the public at this point?
Let's go, there's not too many. Let's go through the public. Just have one question. Michael, are you favor, or just general comments? I can't help them.
I have a lot of concerns.
All right, so it's general comments.
I'm gonna change mine to an opposition.
Okay. You're screwing up my paperwork, don't you? All right, we'll start with people against. The first one is Judy Reed. Please state your name at the microphone.
My name is Judy Reed. I live in Mystic. Okay, I have a few facts and feelings I'd like to share. I brought this letter to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission at Town Hall. I will read it and add. I'm very concerned about the proposal to build two more hotels in the Mystic Stonington area. I have lived in Mystic 15 years and 45 years in the city of Groton. Down with more hotels, respectfully. We do not need any more hotels in Mystic. There are a number of hotels already, I think I have this right. Holiday Inn, Days Inn, Comfort Inn, Quality Inn, Howard Johnson, Tabor Motel. I think there might be a Hilton, Marriott, Hyatt, I think, numerous bed and breakfast, et cetera, and a roadway inn. I didn't even notice that until tonight coming in. There is a glut. It's a ridiculous, horrible idea, in my view. It would add to the destruction of the very atmosphere we feature in our beautiful, quaint area. Why we invite people here? It would continue to pave over Mystic with more plastic and neon. We do not need more hotels. Just a couple more thoughts, facts and feelings. Just a couple more thoughts, facts and feelings. There are traffic and safety issues also. The major time for tourism is, of course, Memorial Day until Labor Day. But we would have to live with these two no ho- chi- with these two new hotels year-round. The developer wants the zone, this is, I'm a little shaky on this, but the developer wants the zoning change to be neighborhood development district. Even though that is one of Stonington's zoning categories, and this might be an opinion, it sounds cozy, but misleading for hotel development. Okay, uh, okay, now I have a couple more thoughts. I'll try to be brief, because I know other people have this, and we don't want to stay all night. I have a few questions and comments, I don't want to just... Okay, how big are the hotels? How many floors? Four floors? Well, that's, it's higher than the aquarium, I think, whatever. How many parking spaces are involved for each of these? And here we go. Asphalt paving over natural areas, animal life, destroyed, uprooted, lots of, loss of habitat. I didn't hear anything about swimming pools. I'm assuming there are no swimming pools involved. If, if there are, that's another subject. The definition of neighborhood development district is a little over my head. I'm just starting to get accustomed to this area, le- uh, as far as politics are concerned. Um, I think that's about it, respectfully to the developer, but are we looking for the Disney World in Connecticut? And that's all, that's, that's a feeling, but really, buildings, buildings, buildings. God bless Dennison Nature Center. I say, I firmly recommend that you vote no for two more unnecessary hotels. Thank you very much, Judy Reed.
Thank you. Um, Carleen, you're up.
Again, for the record, my name is Carleen Donarumo. I live in Pawtucket. And I agree with Mr. Dietman. Let's talk about what the regulations say about what Neighborhood Development District is. It says the Planning and Zoning Commission recognizes there exists commercial properties located in close proximity to the village cores. This isn't in the, near any village core. It constantly refers to being good neighbors to the residential people around. There are no residential people around there. NDD isn't to encourage the reclamation of underutilized commercial parcels. This was a vacant piece of property, which they demolished every single tree that was on the property. That's not underused commercial. That's not a definition of underused, uh, commercial property. To preserve and enhance the town's historic character. I don't think they're doing that either. I think their goal was to, uh, take advantage of the specific standards where there are no front yard setbacks, no side yard setbacks, no rear yard setbacks. Their goal was to maximize this property, and I do not think it fits the definition of NDD, and I hope you share that thought. The other thing is, I would like to know, what evidence have they provided this commission with marketing studies that justify the cost, not the cost, but justify the addition of two hundred and seventy-one more hotel rooms in our town? The worst thing that can happen would be empty hotels all over the place. I, I don't think our town wants that. Um, I think they can get a hotel on there, just one, under regular regulations, and that's what they should come back with. I think you should deny the NDD application. Thank you.
Thank you, Carleen. Dabnett Schaefer?
Dabnett Schaefer, Seventy-One Dean's Mill Road. Um, and I'm also the executive director of the Dennison Pequot-Sipos Nature Center and Coogan Farm, um, the property which directly borders this potential, uh, development to the south. As many of you know, uh, the Nature Center purchased this property five years ago through a remarkable community campaign supported by our membership, over seven hundred local individual and organizational donors, and recognized by both state and federal agencies and that deem this property a valuable environmental resource. And a property, our property, was put into a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Conservation Easement due to its importance protecting two watersheds, providing critical habitat for several state-listed species, including the New England Cotton Tail, and with its prominent ridge line, one of the highest points in Mystic, that serves as an important habitat for migratory birds, including bald eagles and osprey as part of the Atlantic Flyway. Support for the preservation of our property, directly adjacent to this property, has recently been reaffirmed with a large private grant that's dedicated to continuing our work of improving this habitat to foster native plants and wildlife in the adjacent historic orchard, which is directly over the south border. Coogan Farm was the final piece of a puzzle that along with Dennison Homestead and Avalonia Land Conservancy properties created a four-hundred-acre greenway that provides an intact wildlife corridor and a bucolic backdrop for the historic setting of downtown Mystic, the Mystic Seaport, just as the Peace Sanctuary, also managed by the DPNC, and adjacent open spaces on the Coogan, or, excuse me, the Groton side, provide a backdrop for us looking across the river to the west. In fact, the preservation of this land, which includes over ten miles of hiking trails that we manage and provide to the community as open space, free of charge, is so important that when this property was initially cleared, we fielded multiple calls from our members and citizens in the community who were concerned that this valuable community resource was potentially being damaged. They initially thought it was Coogan Farm. It was not, but it was very close. Um, we recently received a copy of these site plans late last week, and we similarly had several concerns that have not been addressed. Um, the primary concern is, as has been mentioned here, is that this zoning change will allow a four-story, two-four-story hotels and would completely eliminate the buffer that is currently required next to our environmentally sensitive property that is in a state and federal conservation easement. There are no elevations in this plan, um, that actually show what this property is going to look like from Coogan Farm, from the Mystic River, or from downtown Mystic. These hotels positioned on one of the highest ridge lines in Mystic will be visible from the river and likely downtown. They'll be breaking the scenic landscape and reflecting glare and light onto our property and negatively impacting wildlife. When, uh, our other neighbors, the Masonicare property, built their parcel, they were very careful to be sure that the buildings did not breach the crest of the ridge, so that that landscape and that view of Mystic, which is what people come here for when they stop on the highway, when they drive down Greemanville Avenue, when they look back up the river from downtown Mystic, that's what they expect to see, not the tops of hotels, uh, on the ridge line. While we recognize, as other people have commented, that this property is already zoned commercially, there are real concerns that changing from the TC-80 to an NDD zone would significantly increase the negative impact on our important property. And because of this, we're asking that this change be denied. Um, we are at the very minimum, we are respectfully asking that no action be taken so that we have more time to assess the impact of this on the Coogan Farm. We need to im- assess the impact on the integrity of the conservation easement at Coogan Farm and ensure that we are properly doing our due diligence to protect the integrity of our community resource as a whole, which serves multiple goals in the POCD, including providing open space, sustainable transportation through walking and biking trails, and many other things which the public has wanted and supported and has been realized through the preservation of Coogan Farm. So I would respectfully ask that we decline this, uh, zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. David Evans?
My name is David Evans. I'm an owner of property at, uh, One Twenty-Four Wampasit. And, uh, I'm here as a result of the fact that I'm the treasurer of the Dennison Society and the Dennison Homestead and a trustee on that board, and that gives me a seat also on the DPNC board. And, uh, I'm here to support the entire analysis that Dabnett just presented to you, and to add to that, as a resident of this area and, uh, someone who is always going back and forth on these roads and through this area that we're talking about, it's already a real challenge for most of the year from a traffic standpoint. I just do not see that this is a valuable addition that requires some sort of change as proposed before you tonight. And beyond that, it, uh, conceptually blows my mind to think of a four-story hotel on that promontory, that lovely land that has a great view of the entire Mystic River Basin, and then the adjoining open space that, uh, the Dennison Society and Coogan Farm and the Nature Center have preserved for this town. So I respectfully, uh, encourage you to turn down this change in the zoning regulations. Thank you.
Michael McQuade?
I operate McQuade's Marketplace, which is adjacent to this development, and, um, I have, uh, concerns about water and w- water pressure. On the, the second floor of our supermarket, w- we have had an office up there, and at one point, I, uh, put up a, uh, cleaning compound and pharmacy there. We had huge water pressure problems that we had to put in, um, extra tanks, cumultorated tanks, to get pressure to, to, uh, operate. Eventually, like, five years ago, I moved that operation from the second floor down to the first floor because the, the, um, because the water pressure was such an issue. The other thing I'm concerned about is, you know, when the fire department comes in, and every year, we, we have to test, uh, how much pressure we, we have in, in our, um, in our system for our sprinklers. And with the, all the development aro- around, um, you know, pu- pu- putting in extra storage and booster pumps and all that extra stuff to, to get, uh, the, the, the flow would, makes me nervous, because that's a tremendous amount of money, and that, that's something that I don't have to do now, and I'm thinking that we would have to do, do this. Uh, so tho- that's my big concern about water. The other concern I, I had is when, when we did our development, um, twenty-some years, years ago, um, they, I originally wanted to, to, you know, to make, um, Village Farm Road a kind of one-way and, and attach it to, uh, uh, Coogan Bo- Bo- I mean, to, um, Claire Drive. And the town commission at that time wanted the, the Claire Drive to go all the way up to the end, and they said to us that, that you have to bring the water and everything all the way up to the, to our property line. And then eventually, when that other piece of property was developed, that road would be continued, because they wanted, I, I was told, to, to bring that road all the way down eventually to Route Twenty-Sev- Seven. So we went through all that expense to do that, and now with this, this plan, it's just gonna end there, and I went and had to, I went and had to do that or give all that land away, and I could have had, uh, a better parking lot and, and, uh, all that stuff. So I'm, I'm concerned about the water mostly, but I just don't understand why the road doesn't continue down the way the town originally told me it was going to, that would be. And if that's, if they changed the zoning for that piece of property, does that mean my property, does that get ch- changed as well? Does that whole area get changed, or is it just that one tiny little hotel?
It would just be their properties, the front hotel and the, and the rear ones, based upon their master plan.
Just that's like.
Right.
Your property would remain the same. Mr. McQuade, can you just, um, clarify for me? When you developed putting, uh, McQuade's, the Claire, Clara Drive, you thought it would go all the way behind your property and then what is now the Dennison Pequot property kind of border that and shoot down onto Twenty-Seven? Is that what you're saying?
That's what Bob Bermanham wanted to happen. He wanted Claire Drive to go all the way to Route Twenty-Seven. He said the next guy who developed the property behind me would take it, and eventually it would go to Route Twenty-Seven.
And then you pay, you paid for that?
Well, I built the road all the way up there. I could, could have, you know, just repositioned the building and had, had it, um, ev- everything come in the way it is, the way, where you go into for a casting cake. I didn't have to go all the way up. That was a...
I've always wondered why.
That was a quarter of a million dollars, that's why. That's what the town wanted, and so that's what I did.
Okay, I always thought it was a little, little different.
And, and you know, the worst thing about our location is being on the dead end. Having that connect to Route Twenty-Seven will make it easier for people to get in from different directions. It would be a benefit, uh, to, to us. I mean, I still have people say that they can't find a stupid store, you know? So it's, 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 it's my biggest problem, that and signage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, hi, I'm Stephen Dodd, uh, Fifty-Nine Walcott Avenue in Stonington. I am also a trustee at the Dennison Pequot-Sipos Nature Center. Um, I can't add much to what, um, Dabnett said, but, um, I, I'd just like to amplify her comments, but also point out a couple of things on a technical, I guess, side. And the regulations, I, I, so I'm, I'm opposed to this, um, this change. Last year, uh, we, um, there was a request to meet with folks... Last year, we -- there was a request to meet with folks from the Nature Center from Babu, representing the ownership of the project. DAVnet and I agreed it was a short notice meeting to meet with him. He explained that he would like to talk to us about our property. The background's relevant, but -- and he requested that he be allowed to purchase 25 feet of the border and into the Coogan Farm for the length of the common line. We explained that at the time that that's not possible. The land is actually under an easement, as was mentioned, for both the federal government on U.S. Fish and Wildlife and DEEP in state of Connecticut because of its unique environmental We then spoke for a while about the project and that we were unaware of the intent. We understood there was a buildable lot there, so that wasn't something we objected to, but that the plan was pretty well developed, very close to what we see today at that point. And we just asked that since there was a -- there were a number of concerns we had, we articulated those, talking about lighting flowing into the property or onto the property. We have an obligation as part of the agreement with the Fed and state that we protect the environmental value of that property. That included things like a development like this that might compromise the value for the wildlife. And that we went through articulating some of these things and said, you know, we were surprised that it had gotten so far along without any kind of interaction with us, particularly since there was, and I believe there's, and I know there still is, there was a walkway planned to go directly into and onto the Nature Center property, which we had no, we were not aware of at the time. It's not, we'd like more, as much public access as is possible, but we certainly would like some insight and have to have some input on that planning. As DAVnet articulated, we again were kind of surprised because we knew it was, the application was withdrawn. And then in the last few days, we saw again a completed plan, also with no real explanation of lighting issues. We hadn't been, no one had spoken with us that is the Nature Center since then. Includes again the walkway. I'm not sure why, it just seems to me it would be an appropriate thing to go out, reach out to the Nature Center, particularly given the fact we'd explained there were a bunch of concerns. And at the time the plan was shown to us last year, we could get no answers on any of the questions we had. Babu just explained that he didn't know the answers, and we actually flipped through looking at the landscape plan and other aspects of it because we were familiar with it. We'd just done a fairly major project there. We're familiar, that is, with landscape, with plans like these. With that as a backdrop, I'd say the NDD, in my mind, doesn't make a lot of sense when I look at the Statement of Purpose, 721.2. Somebody talked already about the reclamation on underutilized commercial parcels, but I would point out that abutting this piece of property that is special and I think, I feel strongly a unique asset to the town. It also says that in the Statement of Purpose, it's intended to encourage and XYZ and preserve and enhance the town's historic character. But I would add, and the next is sensitive environmental resources. So I read there's an obligation to pay attention to that and protect those. It also, in addition to other things that are noted, it adds compatibility to surrounding neighborhoods. I think that there's a pretty strong argument that although there's not technically a residential neighborhood there, the Nature Center sees tens of thousands of children, to a large degree, adults and other folks enjoying the natural environment there, and that we're therefore a pretty important surrounding neighbor. We're not just a, and not to diminish it, but we're not one prop, one home, or it's a community asset. 721.2-2 says that NDD also is characterized by harmony and compatibility with surrounding residential neighborhoods and adequate buffers that are consistent with the existing conditions on site and in the neighborhood, and prevention of glare to adjacent properties from lighting on site. I think, I'd argue that Coogan Farm and its environmental and educational uses and the Nature Center's obligation and commitment to federal and state agencies to protect this unique environmental value demands a high bar when it comes to these aspects of the NDD to be taken into consideration as a neighborhood development district. And specifically here, the buffer is a real problem, right? With the NDD, the buffer evaporates. So the question, the request of us to sell 25 acres initially was presumably an effort to get some additional buffer, though that wasn't explained to us. It was actually, not that there was anybody who was misleading us, but it was explained that it had more to do with a berm and other issues that we didn't, we couldn't accommodate anyway. But the, this now eliminates that buffer, has a building very close in proximity to, of an environmentally sensitive area that should get some special consideration. We're not against development, want to make that clear. But in addition, we really do need time to, and more information to understand the implications so we can satisfy our obligation to the federal and state government agencies to make sure that the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they contributed on behalf of taxpayers to protect that property is, we adequately represent them in this. And so I therefore think that the elimination of the buffer presents a unique problem for this committee to consider for a very valuable and unique piece of property. And we're not against the construction and the, using the existing development district, but this just creates a significant risk for the asset that I think the Coogan Farm is to the community. And I think it's a mistake that I don't, I would be, it would be a mistake to approve it, but I don't see that it's justified and satisfies the requirements of the NDD. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application?
All right.
You're next, but you were general comments.
All right, so there's no...
All right, so you're next. Go ahead.
I so much wanted to speak in general comments or in favor of it, but I was before you folks many times. I hate zone changes. I really do. And it should be an extreme case, and the NDD regulations, I can't stand it. It needs to go away because it served a great purpose in Pocketuck and that one property. That was a perfect property, but I haven't seen anything come close to that yet. I really want, it would be nice to figure out a way to put two more hotels if the zoning allowed it. I think it's up to the developer to determine whether it's needed or not. I don't think the town needs two more hotels, but I'm consistent with how I feel about zone changes or variances. And particularly the Neighborhood Design District, I feel for the applicant's representative here on trying to push this through. It's clearly an opportunity to try to manipulate the zoning regulations and find this to push out, really. Based on, based on the report, currently the property allows 271 maximum rooms, and they're looking for 294. I'm consistent with being very, very concerned. It's about who's in this backyard. And Neighborhood Design District, if it was, even though it doesn't even fit, Carleen Donarumo and others have said, you can go through the parameters, it doesn't even come close to fitting it. However, if we're going to try to squeeze it into this regulation, we have to look at the neighbors. And the neighbor is Dennison Pequot Seapost Nature Center, Coogan Farm, that section of it. And that neighbor, I got to respect the neighbors. And that neighbor says no. And it's not as if this is a property that can't already have significant development on it. And the regulations, TC80, I just went through this in Mystic on Seaport Marines' application. They can do a lot of things there, and they can certainly make significant improvements on there. They're just trying to squeeze out another 20 rooms. And I don't blame them for applying. I mean, they got a right to do it and given it an old college try. But there's, you can, guys can reject this on so many different ways that you'd like to, but, and one very important one are these buffers. These buffers, I think, should be respected, and if they can fit 271 rooms on this property, and I understand they want to phase it between a couple of hotels, it makes sense from an economic standpoint, that's not my problem. I think they've got ample opportunity to develop this property significantly. I'd love the tax base. That's why I wish you could fit two hotels on this if they had more room, but they don't. And so I have to, I wanted to speak in general comments and hope they could figure out a way to make it work. But based on this application, it is an NDD, which makes it a zone change, which makes the master plan the zone. I couldn't understand it more clear as every one of you, and maybe more than some. So I guess you'd have to reject this master plan.
Thank you. That concludes the list of commentators that wish to speak. Does anyone else wish to speak before we move on? Okay. I guess it's rebuttal now, do you?
Yeah.
All right. We have to like to rebut anything?
I think I can address a couple of these, and then I would request the commission's permission to take some time to address the remainder. So from a traffic standpoint, traffic was brought up in a couple of situations. Based on the size of this development, even after all the approvals through the town process, this particular project would have to go before the state traffic commission as well and get their input and approval before anything could be done. The question was raised about how many hotels and too many hotels and that sort of thing. And certainly, you know, the developer wouldn't be spending the money to try and develop this if they didn't think it was viable. There are some studies out that would provide it to the developer. We didn't submit those as part of the application package, but if people are interested, we certainly could provide some of that information. Lighting was brought up on several occasions. Obviously, the site development would be all full cutoff fixtures. There is a photometric plan included in the design, which shows that we have a zero-foot handle at the property line. And from the building height, and I understand DAVnet and the Dennison folks concerned here, the Holiday Inn is a three-story building with a peak roof. These are four-story buildings, but with a flat roof. So in general, this building's seven to eight feet taller than the peak of the roof on this building and at a similar elevation. You know, I understand that it's still taller, but just to give you some perspective there. And the remaining comments, the water pressure, we're addressing that with Aquarian. Like I said, our MEP folks didn't seem to think it was an issue, but we certainly will confirm that. And the other comments, I would request the commission's permission to come back to you next month with more information.
Did you ask Aquarian to comment on this, and have they, or have they not?
We did get some comments from them just this afternoon, which, this is from Judy Sapanen, their manager of Mystic Operations. She says, "We haven't received the information we need from the developer or owner, which includes an updated site plan, demand information, request for any needed fire flow tests, and request for a will serve letter. If improvements are needed to serve the new hotels, the cost would be the responsibility of the developer or owner. Since the process hasn't been started, if the town wants to approve the project, it would be good if it was approved contingent upon a will serve letter." So general comments, it wasn't, you know, a specific reaction to a study at this point.
Did you want to comment at all on the comments made having to do with the buffer and what type of buffer you, the site plan was going to allow to the neighboring properties?
So we are maintaining a 20-foot buffer along the Dennison property line, and that is landscaped, as you can see in the landscaping plan.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if the people had the opportunity to see that or to, has that been shared?
We did provide the Dennison folks with, but admittedly, it was late last week when we provided them a full set of plans. And I did meet with DAVnet, and we had a brief discussion, and, you know, we are awaiting their input, for sure. But yeah, it's a 20-foot buffer that is landscaped. Obviously, that's not what would be required in the TC80 zone. You know, fair enough.
Could you, I mean, we've heard substantial evidence how this doesn't conform to the requirements of the NDD zone. And I really didn't hear anything in your presentation that spoke to, you know, how this does conform. So since the zone change is required to do this, I think there's an obligation to provide some support to the commission as to reasons for this and how it fits the designation.
Right.
Quite frankly, it appears to not fit.
Our take on this in discussions was that by providing the pedestrian circulation and providing, you know, albeit a transient residential population, but a residential population that would be, you know, patrons at McQuade's Market and the shops across the street and the aquarium, we would be creating sort of a transient village that would be a benefit to the town in some way. Whether that fits the, you folks' definition, I don't know, but that was the take that we had on it.
But how are you addressing the envi, and you had said that earlier, but how are you addressing the environmental impacts to the neighboring properties, et cetera? How have you addressed those requirements?
I don't know that the regulation specifically tells us that we have to do something for the adjacent properties from an environmental standpoint. And certainly, the development on this property is meeting all of the state standards for environmental from a stormwater perspective and that sort of thing. You know, yes, we have a lot of pavement, but we're also providing a significant amount of detention and infiltration and drainage structures to offset that additional pavement. You know, the site is very heavily landscaped as required by the town's regulations.
Okay. So sensitive environmental resources. So as has been expressed, right, the Dennison property is a sensitive environmental resource. So how, what in this plan protects that?
I mean, certainly, we are providing the 20-foot buffer. And, you know, along with that 20-foot vertical buffer, and horizontal buffer, there's also a significant vertical buffer. Here we are making a deep cut on that end of the property in order to set these hotels level with this hotel from a grade elevation.
But you're also asking for a five-foot increase in the height from 50 to 55 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Does anyone have any other questions, the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll now hear from staff.
We sent this application to various other departments and agencies for their review. We sent it to our, the town's engineering consultant in the absence of a town engineer for the time being, a CLA engineer, who had some comments on the stormwater, mostly asking for, you know, inspections and things like that as it's done, but no... for, you know, inspections and things like that as it's done, but no, no real issues that were, come up with for the stormwater, stormwater management here. The WPCA, above and beyond the moratorium, as was discussed, you know, they raise concerns about just capacity issues in that area, and ways to address that, and they wanted more information about that. This was before the ADRB, a few times between the last application and this one, the building design for the Phase One Hotel, there were improvements to that based upon the ADRB's recommendations. Of course, the Phase Two Hotel, there isn't a design for that one yet, but the design for this one here that you see, in general, most people would think it looks better now than it did when it was originally proposed a few months ago. And the ADRB made recommendations to the landscaping plan as far as enhancing it. This went before the Police Commission a few times, and the Police Commission still has concerns about the intersection of Village Farm Road and Coogan Boulevard. The applicants are putting in the island there to make sure that people only make a right turn. The Police Commission, they're still generally concerned about the visibility there when you take the right turn, that you can't see when cars are coming over the hill, and the cars coming over the hill can't really see when you exit there. And I'm not sure, can't remember if it was mentioned tonight, but the applicants have a series of signs internal to the parking lot that discourages people from exiting onto Village Farm Road from the new hotels. The Economic Development Commission discussed this, at least the previous application, and, you know, basically recommended it based upon the tax benefits that the application would bring. And, you know, when you do decide on this, there's a few decisions, a few votes to be made. One of them's a decision on the waivers requested, which, from the zone change master plan point of view, is a municipal fiscal analysis and a cultural aesthetic or heritage analysis. It's also a decision on conformance with the POCD in the comprehensive plan, which is required for a zone change per state law. And also the decision on the master plan and zone change application itself, and a decision on the site plan application for Phase One. So even though these are combined into one, it's separate votes required for that. And, you know, as far as comments people made about the, you know, whether this is appropriate, this is an appropriate use of the NDD, that's for the commission to decide. As far as the general comments about, about it not being right next to the Village Core, that is something the commission addressed when they approved the applicant's regulation amendment to generally allow the NDD in the TC-80 zone. So the commission did decide that, in general, the NDD could be used in the TC-80 zone, but now it's up to you to decide whether this application meets the Statement of Purpose and meets the regulations as far as the NDD zone itself. One small thing to point out is that a small sliver of this property along the Nature Center is actually zoned residential RM15, I believe. So the regulations don't allow a residential zone to go to NDD, so that small sliver will have to remain RM15. That doesn't really affect anything, because that's just shown as their buffer anyway, but just for the record, it won't be 100% of the site, that little sliver will have to remain residential. And, well, at this point, the applicant has requested a continuation, so it seems as though they wanted to get more information before you.
So would you just continue the public hearing on that?
Yeah, we'll have to figure when to do that for. Our next meeting's coming up, our January 21st or February 4th, depending on, you know, how soon.
Fourteenth.
Yeah. So this would be continued to February 4th.
Okay.
What information were we expecting? Should we kick this off early?
So, Mr. Parent, the information that you would be providing, it's the water and sewer information, was that it?
Correct.
This might be a nice time to say that if we had more information. I do see some renderings here of the mistas with the proposed hotels. I'd like to see a rendering in the night sky. In other words, I would like to see what we have today with the blue lights, as well as what we would have with the night sky with the new hotel. And I'd like to see that from what you've given us, but also from the Pequat property, as well as from the, the property bordering Sonicare, which is a major residential unit. I also think that a fiscal analysis would be appropriate to see. I know you've asked for waiver, but that's just an opinion I have.
There's a question for the staff. Are we obligated to continue this?
I think if they've asked for a continuance to provide you more information, I think you not giving that a chance might be risky.
I won't be here on the 4th of February, but like Chuck, I don't see, I don't even begin to see how this fits in the Neighborhood Development District. And so I would ask for a very comprehensive explanation of how this project meets the, primarily the Statement of Purpose of the Neighborhood Development District. If I were to vote now, I would, I would vote to turn this project down right out of the gate, because, because I don't see any reason to change the zone here.
What was presented so far?
Keith, what's the, if then you were granted, does it affect the existing property? Because the bulk requirements are now waived, and should they want to expand the existing property, would they come?
They could, like, if they wanted to add, put an addition on the existing hotel, they would have to do that. They'd have to come back for a master plan amendment, go through this process.
Okay. Could we ask the applicant if they want to vote tonight?
Well, something I've already heard, cutting a continuum, right?
Do we? Phrase it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I wouldn't want it to be a situation where the commission votes before they get a chance to give the information that they'd like to give you.
Okay, could we have a motion to continue the public hearing until when, February 4th, Keith?
Right, it'd be February 4th, and it would be at a different location. It would be at the Board of Education Administration Building, the former Parketuck Middle School at 40 Field Street in Parketuck, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, could I have a motion to continue, please?
Second motion.
Okay, have a motion that had been made to continue the public hearing until February 4th at the old Parketuck Middle School that has been seconded, any discussion?
I'd just like to make sure that we state that at that continuation, if new information is brought forth, that that will again open up for public comments.
Okay.
Want to make sure that we understand that.
We have a motion to continue the public hearing, it's been seconded, and the motion will contain a statement that public comment will be permitted if new information is submitted. All right. All right, everyone in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions, motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I'm sorry?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
All right, motion to adjourn. All right.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you very much.